Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. My name is Megan Sathery. I'm with the Lewis County Planning Department, and I want to welcome you to the Planning Commission Public Meeting today. This meeting is taking place in person, streaming live via Zoom, and it is being recorded. For those joining us via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or device when you are not speaking. If you forget to mute your phone or device, we will mute you. Tonight's meeting is a workshop on amendments to the RV Parks and Campgrounds Code and a workshop on the Onalaska Subarea Plan. A reminder, the Zoom chat feature is modified so participants may report technical difficulties directly to myself. No public comment or questions will be taken through the chat feature. We will start with a roll call. The following planning commissioners are present in the room. Commissioner Spogen, Russell, Alves, Corbin, and Chastain. The following planning commissioners are present on Zoom. Commissioner Fritsch and Commissioner Foster. With seven planning commissioners present, we do have a quorum. Would one of the members on Zoom please test to make sure we can hear you?
Just in passing.
Okay, thank you. We are now ready to begin. Chair spoken.
Hello, my name's Lori Spogen, and I'd like to call the order the June 13th, 2023 meeting of the Lewis County Planning Commission. Prior to tonight, the commission received the agenda for today, and the agenda is displayed on the screen. I'd like to entertain a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
I'd make the motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
I'll vote.
Aye.
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 The motion passes with seven yes votes.
Also, prior to tonight, the commission received the meeting notes from May 23, 2023 meeting. If there are no corrections, I'd like to entertain a motion and a second to adopt the minutes as written.
So moved. Second.
Vote.
Aye.
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 The motion passes with seven yes votes.
Are there any members of the public that would like to provide comment tonight? Please note that comments are different than testimony, and any comments that you want to provide with the public wants to provide on an item that's going to come up before the Planning Commission for a vote should be submitted as testimony when the record is open.
Doesn't mean a darn thing to me, but okay.
I think Gretchen had her hand up when she was just trying to vote. Gretchen, can you confirm?
Yeah, that's, that was a delayed hand lowering.
Okay, we do have a member of the public who has signed up to testify. So I will call your name, and you'll have three minutes to speak. And I have a timer up on the screen to let you know when your time is up. And you can begin whenever you'd like, and please start with your first and last name.
My name is John Hess. I live in Centralia. I am here to comment on the proposed RV regulations. The new RV, the primary purpose is, I am thinking, I would like to have some places to park some people who are in my house. And I can't afford to buy them houses, but I can afford to maybe build an RV lot, a small one. The problem is, the regulations that are being proposed, none of you people on the Planning Commission can really plan an RV lot. You don't have access to how much money I have in my wallet, in my bank account. The only thing this Planning Commission can do is make it more difficult. All its Planning Commission can do is provide roadblocks. The whole purpose is to try and get rid of some of the roadblocks. Now, I read the proposed modification. It requires a two and a half acre minimum. Why would you want an RV lot with two and a half acres? That could park up to 100 RVs. I guess it's 500 square feet, 100,000 square feet, or two and a half acres is 100,000 square feet, 110,000. Why does it need to be anything more than the mandatory minimum for public safety? Get that two and a half acre requirement out of there. Put in the words mandatory minimum for public health and safety. That's all you need. Stay out of trying to determine sizes. It's not your business. It's not your affair. That's the affair of the Public Health Department down here with the, with the with the safe, health and safety people to determine just how much space you need to provide water and power and sewage and septic. Other than that, stay out of it. Okay, the same thing would go with the proposed regulations is talking about something about having schools available. An RV lot has nothing to do with schools. Schooling and facilities are provided by the county. Any RV lot will have to pay taxes, which the purpose of those taxes is to provide education benefits. So stay out of that. That has no business in the regulation. Get it out of there. Make it as easy as possible to be done. We, the county is in a housing crisis. Don't make it more difficult. Get the crap out. Keep it simple. Do away with as much red tape as you possibly can. That's your goal. That should be your job. Okay? I think that kind of does it.
Thank you very much. Will, is there anybody else online that might would like to comment?
I don't see any hands raised on Zoom, and I haven't received any messages.
Okay, we always do appreciate comments, so thank you for coming. Tonight's agenda is a workshop on amendments to the RV Parks and Campground Code. As a reminder, this is a work session for the staff to present information on the topic. No public comments on the proposal will be taken during the workshop. And public comments should be provided as testimony when the records open somewhere around July 25th. Okay, it sounds, it looks like Preston's gonna talk to us about this.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Spogen. Preston Pinkston, I'm a planner with the Lewis County Planning Department. Tonight, we're going to talk about the RV Park and Campground Code amendments that we have prepared. So I'm going to give you a high overview of where RV parks and campgrounds are allowed, who the standards apply to, what the minimum requirements are, what's changing. And then we'll close briefly with next steps for the Planning Commission. So first, let's start with why we're changing the RV Park and Campground Codes. The RV Park and Campground Rules are currently located in Title 16 of the Lewis County Code, which is our title for subdivisions. RV Parks and Campgrounds are not subdivisions. They don't create individual lots for purchase or sale, and they don't create legal lots of record. So we are going to move those to Title 17, which is the title where we keep land use development regulations. Moving the code to Title 17 also provided us with the opportunity to clean up and clarify a number of things in the code. We will go over those changes in the next slides. Okay, where RV parks and campgrounds are allowed is not changing. Right now, RV parks and campgrounds are allowed on all properties in unincorporated Lewis County. It's set in RAI, STI, STR, and MRL zones. So that's rural area industrial, small town industrial, small town, small town residential, and mineral resource lands. RV parks and campgrounds can be allowed on forest resource land or agricultural resource land properties, but only if the RV park or campground is accessory to the primary forestry or agricultural use on the site. So who do, who do the rules apply to? Right now, if a property owner is offering two or more camping sites for a fee, then it's an RV park or campground and needs to meet the standards. You can have one camping site you offer for a fee. That's okay. If you add a second, then it triggers the, the need for an RV park, and you have to meet the standards of the code. If you're letting friends or family camp on your property for free, then it is not an RV park, and the standards do not apply. These are not new regulations or standards, and the code change does not change any of these scenarios. So these are all allowed currently, or how we enforce them currently in the code. Yeah.
Would you go back?
Sure.
So, step two, presently, you can let people camp on your property?
Yes.
And in the future, you can let people camp on your property?
Yes, for free. So if you, if you are, if you are renting spaces, leasing spaces, charging, that would require, if it's more than one, that would require you to meet the standards of the code.
So on county property, I could let my family camp there for even greater than 180 days, some of these numbers.
Well, yeah, on your property, right, in, in Lewis County. Right, yeah, yep.
Can I, can I clarify? No, you can't let them camp for 180 days on your property. Right now, there's a 60-day limit on camping. After that, it becomes a residential use. And residential, a residential use of an RV is different than this. So if we want to talk about that, that's totally fine, but not the same. So right now, up to 60 days, you can let somebody camp on your property for free, multiple people for free.
And we will have a, there is a section in here where we touch on time limits and things like that. Yeah.
I've written my question. I want to get back to John's question, but we'll wait till you're done. Thank you.
So, are RVs required to hook up to your septic system, or can they be there for dry camping? Or both, either?
Currently?
Yeah.
They, if you are using them for recreation and you're not exceeding your 60-day time, time limit, you do not have to have them hooked up to facilities.
Okay, but you can, as long as your septic can allow for it. Okay.
Right, right.
Just, sorry, just to make, make sure it's very clear. These regulations are not intended to regulate people letting their friends and family camp on their property, right? So this is, we're staying out of that. This is when you're charging a fee for people to camp in an RV or tent on, on the property that you own, then you become that. So we just want to make sure it's very clear that we're not, we're not touching that right of everybody to let people camp on their properties. So go for it.
If a person is charging a fee, then are they required then to hook up to septic and, you know, power and all that kind of stuff, or?
So if you are exceeding the 60-day occupancy time, then yes, you would have to have the necessary hookups for that. If you are not, then you don't have to, is the, how the current, current code reads, and you can do one. So right now, somebody in the county could have a RV spot that they rent that is not an RV park, as long as they're, as long as they are not renting that out for 60 consecutive days to the same users, then the RVs don't have to have septic and water facilities. If they're intend, now, they, they could provide those, but our code doesn't mandate that they have them until you hit that 60 consecutive day. Okay, so back to what's changing. All right, so with that brief bit of background information, we'll walk through the big changes. They're all explained in the staff report. We also posted the staff report online for the public. Feel free to stop me as we go through to ask questions. Okay, so definitions. Definitions related to RV parks and campgrounds are being removed from Chapter 1604 and added to Chapter 1710. This is in part because we're moving the whole thing out of Title 16. In addition, we also added new definitions to Chapter 1710 to clarify words used in our development regulations. New definitions include cabin, primitive campground, dispersed camping, camper club, lodging unit, tent, transient accommodation, and yurt. Instead of going into detail about every definition we added, if you have read them already and have questions, we can certainly answer those now. Otherwise, take some time to read them and then get back to Mindy and I between now and the next workshop, and we'd be more than happy to answer those questions you have. But does anybody have questions about the definitions we added? Good.
No.
What was the driver for adding more?
Sorry.
What was the, what drove adding more definitions? What?
So, so we had a lot of regulations in the code that were not adequately defined. So, you know, we, for example, we did not, we don't, we didn't define what a camper club was, right? I mean, we have two of them in Lewis County. We have CTTA and Mayfield Camper Club. And we don't have a, we didn't have a definition for that. We didn't have a definition for what a cabin was when we specifically were talking about cabins that were allowed in RV parks. You know, we didn't have definitions for things like primitive campgrounds. So we really didn't have a lot of, when we say this, this is what we mean for a lot of the terms that were in the existing code and the code that we added. It's new.
I have a quick question, Preston.
Yep.
Um, so the tent transient accommodations, is that a typo? Is that supposed to be tent and then separate bullet point?
Yeah, that's definitely a typo. We missed it. It's tent and transient accommodations. Those are separate definitions.
Okay, and then for transient accommodations, is this just in reference to RV parks, or is this transient accommodations for all of wherever they're, 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 they may be?
Yeah, so the transient accommodation change is affecting all transient accommodations, including those outside of RV parks.
So most specifically, are short-term rentals considered transient accommodations?
I'll let Mindy tackle that one.
Sure, I'll take that one. Not yet in our code. So for the state purposes, yes, they are. When you look at state definition, they are transient accommodation, and that's what triggers the big business license requirement at the state. Our code does not define short-term rentals, and so they are a nothing at this moment in our code. But we are in discussions about how we want to handle that going forward. So I would just say, sit tight for a little bit longer, and I'll be able to give you more information about that.
So that was purposely left out because there has not been a consensus on how to define that or treat that yet.
Yeah, well, it was left out of this one because we didn't want to conflate RV parks and campgrounds with short-term rentals. So we wanted to not put that in with this specific code package. But you are right that we are still working through where the county is going to be comfortable landing on the short-term rental issue. So I will definitely share with you guys as soon as we, you know, start to get to the point where we can share where we think we're headed on that particular issue.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else have questions about definitions before we move on?
I actually do have a question about the cabin. Um, that, is that, I, I noticed there was no, it wasn't necessarily about a size requirement. It was about the use being for recreation, but it doesn't say for a fee.
Right, so we defined cabins as recreational use. A cabin that somebody builds on a lot, and it is the primary dwelling on their lot, is a single-family residence, whether they want to call that a cabin or not. So the, our intent with this one was really to define, when we, when we use the word cabin in our code, we're talking about a recreational use that's associated with some other type of, of primary facility.
And let me just tag on to the end of that. The reason why a fee or a time limit is not included in the definition of cabin is because a lot of people have secondary homes that they call cabins in our county, that they're not renting them out, right? They're their weekend home. And so those would fall under the definition of cabin. And then when we get further in, you'll see that there's specificity in the specifics of RV Park and Campground Code related to length of stay.
So if somebody is living in it full-time, it's a single-family home. If it's a secondary home, temporary home, transient home, then it's considered a cabin, no matter the size or the, or the look or whatever, or is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's go to the next one. Which is, all right, so the review process. Currently, all RV parks and campgrounds are required to have a binding site plan, which is part of the reason that they currently exist in Title 16. We propose that the review process is changed to allow new RV parks and campgrounds through a special use permit. No binding site plan would be required. This is appropriate because RV parks and campgrounds do not need the level of review required by a sign, by a binding site plan. And it will reduce the time and money it takes for an applicant to have their proposal reviewed. Binding site plans create individual lots under one ownership that can be sold or have transfers of ownership, like a condo building. RV parks do not have that, so it doesn't make sense for them to have binding site plans prepared by licensed surveyors. The process for a special use permit and a binding site plan are pretty similar. They both require public notice, and decisions are made by a hearings examiner at a public hearing. We're having issues where land, where the land use summary table may permit an RV park outright. So they don't need a special use permit. They don't need an administrative approval, but they still need a binding site plan. So they're still going through a public noticing process. They're still going through a public hearing. But the mechanism for it is not the right one. So we are proposing that there'll just be special use permits in any zone that we allow them, and we'll remove binding site plans from the requirement. Do you guys have questions about that one?
Does the master site review, I assume they have to do one, are critical areas, all looked at, all the same protection?
Yeah, so, so just a really quick overview for those not familiar with our development process. You always start with a master site review. The master site review is really just your overview of the site in general. We use that to determine if you need things like wetland reports, geotechnical reports, special use permits. Then we let the applicant know. They get all the materials. They go through, in this case, they would go through their special use permit process. They would get a, they would get a special use approval from the hearings examiner, and then the master site review is kind of at that point, just your kind of accessory approval that we do. So we say, hey, now your master site plan's been approved. You can apply for your permits. So they still would have to meet all the same stuff. Yeah, chances are with a special use permit, you might have to have just a little bit more because it's set a hearings examiner that's looking at it. So it's not just your administrative staff making decisions at that point, and you take same public comment and things.
But it still starts with a conversation with that master site review.
Yeah.
Where you're looking at all the punch list items.
Correct, yep.
And what, what would that cost to apply for that?
Um, I can get you the exact number.
Generally?
I think a special use permit is $3,400. Yeah, but we can, let's just get that answer. Binding site plans are similarly cost the, for the permit, and but you actually, but then you have to pay for the surveyor to do the work on top of that.
So if you eliminate the binding site plan, you don't need a surveyor?
Correct.
Oh.
Yep, you do not, you do not, in our, in our new code, you would not need a surveyed site plan to be approved. You actually don't even need an engineered site plan. As long as the site plan meets our site plan requirements checklist, we will move forward with that.
So it would meet something like a septic, critical areas, setbacks, water?
Yep, it'd have to be to scale. I mean, you know, you'd have to, you'd have to have a nice site plan. But there is no requirement that it's prepared by a surveyor or an engineer or anything like that.
Okay. Go ahead.
Did you, were you able to find it, Mindy?
Yeah, just now. Special use permit is 3,200.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
And then there's SEPA on top of that. So special use permits require SEPA. So there's, that is going to be, let's see, 1050 plus, it's going to be $1,300 for SEPA because you'd have to have environmental health review. That most likely would be required for anything other than a very small RV park in, in most scenarios.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. Okay, next one is density. This is a new addition to the code. It allows, it allows for no more than 25% of the camping sites to be occupied by a cabin or yurt, provided that the cabin or yurt is no more than 400 square feet in size. This would allow for things like park models in RV camp, RV parks and campgrounds, which would, you know, expand the level of diversity of lodging options. An example of how we would calculate this is if there are 25 camping sites total, and no more sick, then no more than six of those may be occupied by a cabin or a yurt. The remaining 19 must be RV or tent camping. This, there is also a new allowance for an owner-operator who wants to create tent-only campgrounds. They may create a tent-only campground at a higher density than ones where they offer RV parks or cabins. That, so both of those are new additions to the code. Do you guys have any questions?
What, what would be the reason that somebody couldn't, other than if you have a sewer in a well, why, what would be any problem with tent camping? Like if you put 100 people on there?
There, there is no, there is no problem with the tent camping. Do you mean like the density? Like, why are we limiting the size?
Right.
For, for health and, public health and safety and access circulation, so that we, we can make sure that, the same reason we limit the size for if you have a septic system versus a central dump, it, it's just has to do with public health and safety infrastructure.
Yeah.
Also, with density, keep in mind that there are setbacks around the perimeter of the site so that you're not impacting the neighbors next to you. So you subtract that with the area that you're going to be able to allow for the camping sites, whether it's RV or tent. And then they're all going to have facilities of some kind, whether it's individual pumpouts or bathrooms, potable water, they're likely going to have open space. So there's a lot of things that are included within those parks that take away from the usable space of the campsites themselves, and each campsite needs to have adequate space around it, so they're not against each other. And that is really a fire hazard issue, right? So we need space for fire and equipment, not only to circulate around, but to be in between lots as well.
Yeah, and Commissioner Spogen, just to kind of read her, because you were like, well, why can't we have 100 tents? So if you have a two and a half acre, that's the minimum size, right? So if you have a two and a half acre tent-only camping site, that would give you at least 50 sites potentially that you could have for the density, and each of those sites can have up to three tents. So you're talking 100 and, you're talking 150 tents in the campground, potentially.
How do you regulate water for that? Do you, do you require a well per every so many people then?
Well, I mean, there's a bunch of state regulation around what you have to provide based on your occupancy and your density and things like that. So there's a calculation for that, yeah. But they would do a well site inspection with the county, and they're either going to be a group A system, or they're going to be a group B, uh, group B system, would be my guess.
Okay.
Yeah. One of those two regulated uses. Any other questions about density? Okay. All right, the next one is length of stay. Currently, depending on the type of RV park or campground that you propose in the county, users may stay up to 60 days or 180 days. The new code will allow people to stay up to 180 days at all RV parks and campgrounds, which is six months, regard, regardless of whether, we're just getting rid of your seasonal versus your transient RV parks in general. They're all going to be, it's, if it's an RV park, you get 180 days to stay there. If the owner-operator of the RP, RV park or campground allows a single person or entity to stay for 181 days or longer, then the RV park or campground is considered a mobile home park, and you would have to be compliant with our mobile home park code. Cabins or yurts are transient accommodations. RV parks are not transient accommodations, but the cabins or yurts, if, if a, if a provider wants to build those would be considered transient, they would be limited to 30 days of rental. So the, the camping sites themselves can be rented for 180 days, but if you're renting a cabin, that's a 30-day limit because that's the transient occupancy code for the state.
Preston, when we had the COVID period and we were having issues with landlords being unable to evict tenants, I believe there was some distinction between if it was transient, you could. like if they were living in a, maybe a motel room, you could evict them. Do you, do you know what?
Completely different sets of rules that are governing long-term rental and short-term rental at the state level. So I don't know and I don't remember what happened with those questions of people living in hotels and motels during COVID, but it definitely was a different set of regulations than the long-term rental.
An attempt to try to modify or regulate that. We're, we're not talking about that now.
Nope, absolutely not talking about the tenant issues around long-term rental. That would be a different issue. Yeah.
And we.
Go ahead.
The hotel motel accommodations during COVID fell under the governor's emergency powers, didn't they?
Yeah, there was a whole bunch of emergency powers that were put in place really early. I don't remember the details about those specifically. But then the, a number of the ones that were related to long-term rental that had to do with evictions actually got moved out of the governor's emergency and into code. So a number of them actually became laws outside of the emergency. So when the emergency ended, a number of those still are in place. And, but again, those are about long-term rentals, so they don't apply to the short-term or transient accommodations in any way. And I don't know what ended up happening with the hotel motel stuff. If, that might have just ended with emergency, but I'm not sure.
Well, I remember when the hotel over in Centralia, within the last six months sold and it had a lot of people living in that and the, the new owner was either the impression that it was transient. And, and, and thinking that they would be able to move the people out and evidently that was not the case because they had stayed too long. So I just, I was just wondering whether this was trying to solve any of those problems or not. Okay.
Absolutely not working on those problems.
The, the only, the only problem that we were trying to address is making it so that seasonal workers had a place to stay while they're here for seasons.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yep, which is why we increased it to six months.
I have a clarifying question on that, Preston. If, if the goal is to provide seasonal housing for a hundred and eighty days, why limit the stay in cabins and yurts? Why not also make those available for seasonal rental? Does, or does it have to do with the fact that they're being provided versus somebody pulling in their own RV?
Uh, it's.
Or?
Yeah, so it's actually that the cabins and yurts would fall under the lodging definitions for the transient accommodations at the state level. So RV parks do not in general. So your camping sites don't, but, but cabins and yurts even in the RV parks still are transient accommodations. So they have to be limited to thirty days.
So yurts, according to our code, are not acceptable single-family residents? They're only meant for recreational use?
No, uh, somebody could build a yurt and stay in it as a single-family residence as long as it meets the criteria for a dwelling unit. So if it has the facilities of a, of a residence, it's a residence.
Okay, but if it's going to be rented out, then it has to be for thirty days or less.
In, in, in the, in the.
In the RV park.
A transient accommodation. Yeah, now if, um, let's say, uh, landowner builds a yurt, it meets the definition of our ADU code. They can rent that out like any other ADU that is currently being rented in Lewis County.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So I guess it's clear. Let me, I'll think about it and get back to you if I understand.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, so it's just the fact that it's in the RV park is, is the thirty days or less.
Yeah, it's that they're offering the lodging unit for transient use. It's not a dwelling that they're renting long-term.
Otherwise, it would not be in an RV park.
Right, then it'd be multifamily housing and you can't do that in most of our zones anyways.
Okay, thank you.
To understand this matrix you've got in your head, you'd have to be able to play three-dimensional chess. Because it's every option, it's anyway.
I'm not actually that good at chess, but thank you. Okay, uh, any more questions about this, the length of stage slide before we move on?
Do we have a grid of some sort that, you know, kind of, kind of put all these different options in one visual that, you know, would not only benefit us but the public. I'm thinking that, you know, I can't imagine it being easy to explain all of this to somebody that comes up with a counter, you know, and wants to talk to one of your staff.
We really don't. Uh, we have our, we have our land use summary, which talks about where you can do things. But like the specific what triggers what, there isn't, I don't know, I don't know that there's an easy visual we could make. Although Mindy and I did talk about making a brochure after we've done some stuff about what are you doing, what, like what definitions do you fall under? Um, so we're, we're thinking about it, but currently we don't.
I'll just skip forward. Gretchen asked the question about short-term rentals. That is under conversation right now as well. Not part of this tonight, but is part of a conversation the county is having. County is also having a conversation about RV occupancy. So using RVs as, as full residential units, that conversation is happening as well. Once we get all these things sorted out, we've got the RV parks and campgrounds, we're dealing with that now. Once we deal with those other two issues, I would like to have a brochure that helps people understand, particularly around RVs, what you are and are not allowed to use them for and what the time limits are and all that kind of stuff. So I, I appreciate that this is not the easiest thing in the world to understand. Even though we, I think we've actually made it easier than it was before, but it's still really hard to understand. So we do want to provide some more materials after we conquer a few more issues. And both of those issues, short-term rentals and RV occupancy will come to you guys. So you guys are first stop for those. So you'll see those two.
So are you saying this really isn't anything to do with RV occupancy?
Not, is using them as full residential units. If you're using an RV as a full residential unit, then you're not, you're not in an RV park and campground. You're either on your own private.
His, one of his earlier things.
You're either a private, nope, you're either a private property owner, is using your RV as your full-time residence, or you're in a mobile home park.
Okay.
Right?
And so this is for somebody that wants to have an RV park and rent it out to RV people. Or somebody that wants to have cabins for seasonal workers at, at their, their place and it's gonna be more than two, two units.
No, so that second one, they, this is about RV parks and campgrounds, period.
Just RV.
That is all this is about, RV parks and campgrounds.
Okay.
We are allowing people to now have some cabins in RV parks and campgrounds. So it's more a park model. If we're talking about your private property and you want to offer a short-term rental, that's a whole different issue.
Different thing.
Not part of this conversation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this code, this code only applies to if somebody wants to have two or more camping sites that they offer for lease on their property.
Okay. All right. Well, I, 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 I agree. It seems a little confusing. I would have a.
I think the, I really liked when we were talking and I was talking matrix and Frank jumped in and you said the flyer because that's a good idea. It could be a three or four fold that said, because when I come to the desk, I know what I want to do. I want to do an RV or I want to camp in something or I want a short-term rental.
Actually, take our questions and just answer them in the brochure because, yeah, because when you, yeah.
Well, when I, when I'm thinking of a grid, I mean, I'm sure you guys know what, what I mean by a grid, you know, but you have your, you know, your, your, your unit types or the construction types and then, you know, you know, the other criteria on the other axis, you know, and then where they meet, you know, it, it, provides you some kind of information that, you know, that's useful and easy answer is, you know.
Sure. And I think that's four-dimensional, but we'll work on it. I think it has to be like a, like one of those things that you weirdly twist like this.
You get a bonus if you do five dimensions.
Yes, but we will definitely work on.
But we're gonna see this all again, right? This isn't our first and only. Okay, so this is just our initial. Okay.
And the, the way that I think about it is everything is a house if it's your full-time thing on your property. So if you're living in it full-time and it's the only one on your, on your site, it's a house, it doesn't matter what it is made out of or if it moves. As long as it has septic water and you're occupying it full-time, it's your residence. And then once you move on from that, you get into ADUs and anything above that, you start falling into needing the matrix.
Well, here's a real life example. So I'm, I'm getting close to the age where my wife and I are gonna be doing more RVing and there's more and more, you know, people my age, north of my age that are, you know, full-time RVing it, you know, and so they're being forced to go from RV park to RV park. You know, you know, every, you know, whatever sixty days or whatever the, you know, the requirements are where they're at. You know, and it would be, you know, nice to have maybe some kind of snowbird type category where somebody could, you know, easily stay, you know, if they needed to stay nine months. I mean, you know, people north of my age, you know, have health issues and if you have a health crisis, you know, on your hundred and seventy-ninth day at a place, the last thing you'd want to do is to have to move just because of a county regulation. So there should be some kind of variances possibly that could, you know, be put into place.
The, the issue is at some point you do need to draw the line on where you are no longer offering transient accommodation and you're now offering full-time occupancy. Like a mobile home park. So six months seems like the appropriate, you know, given, like those are kind of your seasons, right? You have your summer, your summer season and then your winter season and six months seems like it's kind of that good place to draw the line. I, I totally understand what you're saying. But at some point you're, you run into where you need to meet different water requirements, different septic requirements. You have different health codes for people that are staying in places full-time for longer than, longer than the seasonal. So a hundred and eighty days is where, where Lewis County currently caps it. It seems like it's where most other county regulations seem to, seem to also cap. Is that a hundred and eighty?
It is, I get it, you know, but I'm, I'm, I'm also, I guess, kind of advocating for, you know, some kind of a variance procedure because life happens. You know, I mean, if, if I had a heart attack, my wife would not be able to pack up our RV and move it someplace. You know, at, at a hundred and seventy-nine days, you know, and so, you know, can we work something into our code that would give some kind of humanitarian allowances for things that don't always fit in the box?
Yeah, so I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get a little reel and it's gonna not sound great, but I'll just give you a preview of some of the things that we're talking about. Many counties do not allow people to live in their RVs. And there's a lot of health reasons for that. When you start living in an RV, which is not intended to be lived in full-time, you start having issues with heat, you start having issues with moisture. We, what we end up seeing in our county is people who have installed illegal fireplaces in there, which is a terrible safety hat, public safety hazard. We see a lot of issues around it. The septic and water are not set up to handle, handle a full-time occupancy. So many counties are not allowing it at all. Occupancy of, of an RV as a residential unit, period. And a lot of the ones that I've been looking at is fourteen days is getting the cap because they're, they're, they're dealing with so much problem on top of problem, on top of problem with letting people live in their RVs full-time. So we, we're, we have that issue here as well. We're having a conversation about it. There are not agreed to opinions yet on that. I'm just giving you the blunt. This is where some people are sitting on the issue. So I, I think that is gonna be a very huge conversation that we have, that is gonna be, it's outside of this again. We're looking at these RV parks and campgrounds as these are recreational uses. We think it is completely appropriate for snowboarding. Right? So you're here in the summer and then you're in Arizona for the winter. Sweet, do it. We want people to be able to work at the ski resort in the winter and legally stay at the RV park while they do that. But when we come around back to the RV occupancy thing, there's gonna be some real serious, hard conversations to be had about that. So, uh, and we are talking medical hardship. We are talking financial hardship. We're having all those conversations, but that's tough. So, yeah.
Um, Mindy, I would just say, I, I really, I appreciate the health concerns regarding the living in RVs. I would say anecdotally that it's a very real possibility that a seasonal, a season at, at the forest service, park service or ski area will exceed a hundred and eighty days. So I wonder if there could be some sort of allowance for, you know, condition of employment, like if the season, if the ski season starts in November and then goes till they go till May because they had a really great snow year, that's gonna be more than a hundred and eighty days. I don't know. I mean, I'm just.
We can certainly talk about it. It's gonna come down to what is enforceable and at what point should these not be RV parks? At what point should people be looking at permitting these as mobile home parks? If the intention is to allow people to stay for longer periods of time, then we actually need the septic and water. And we need them to do some different things with the structures themselves, those RVs as well. So just from an enforcement standpoint and a public health standpoint, we're gonna need to have that cutoff between, you shouldn't permit this as an RV park. This should be permitted as a mobile home park and we need to treat it differently.
Difference, what difference septic would you require? Are you, are you making the assumption that a, a seasonal worker up at the pass would not tap into the septic system?
I'm not making any assumptions about the users themselves. I'm making the assumptions.
Saying, what would you change if they were there? So, what would be the difference between an RV park and a?
If you're a mobile home park, you have to have a septic system. Uh, and probably a large, no, I mean, not each one. I mean, you'd have tanks at each site and then you'd probably have a loss. An RV park does not. You can have a central dump station. Some of the, some of the ones we are adding into the code, you don't have to have, you don't have to have hookups at sites. You just have to have central, like a central building with bathroom facilities. So RV parks are recreational. They're not intended for full-time occupancy, which means if somebody wanted to put in an RV park at seven spaces of density per acre with a central dump station, they can do that. They don't have to have a drain field. And they don't have to have septic at individual lots.
They don't have to have a drain field so somebody's coming and, and, and removing that out of their tank then?
Well, yeah, they'd have a, they'd have like a central dump, you know, like, like a lot of.
What, what, what's wrong with that?
That's just the, those are the health.
I'm just trying to figure out what we're trying to solve.
Yeah.
Car doesn't move for three months and then the septic gets full and you got jam and so they dump it in the drain ditch.
So let's back up. What are we trying to wait? Let me back up. What are we trying to solve? We're not trying to solve the issue that you guys are having a conversation about.
Okay.
We are trying to get RV parks and campgrounds out of chapter sixteen because they are not subdivisions and move them into chapter seventeen, where they belong. And make a few surgical changes to make it easier. So get rid of the binding site plan, make it a special use permit. Clarify some things, allow some, some tiny homes, brand new, think that's a great idea. And make it a lot easier. That is all we are trying to fix. The issue of people living in RVs, huge monumental issue. Not part of this discussion in RV parks and campgrounds. It touches it. When we talk about, when we go into the RV occupancy conversation, which will be outside of this, if decisions are made that, that come back and change the RV park campground stuff, we'll make those then. Because this is such a huge issue, we cannot solve it at this exact moment without having a big conversation about RV occupancy as residential units. So we're not solving the issue that you guys are having a conversation about at all. And not trying to.
Right, so what we're doing is if you want to live in your RV for more than a hundred and eighty days, you need to find a mobile home park to park it at. And if you want to live in it for less than that, you can park it in an RV park.
Or you can park it at your friend's house and we can.
Right. You. We're not talking about like specific things and how long you can or can't live in them. It's, we're talking about where, you know, depending on what, how long you need to stay there, what kind of a place you can put it. Is that pretty much the deal?
Yes.
And we're just talking about defining these RV parks and campgrounds. I mean, actually enhancing some of the things that you can do there, it looks like, so.
Yeah, but the new code says you can, you can park a hundred and eighty days. So we're, we're talking about, could you park? Is that reasonable or should we do more than a hundred and eighty days?
Yeah, I, I probably opened up the can of words and I apologize, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm in general, I'm, I'm generally in favor of a hundred and eighty day limit. I mean, I think it's generous, you know, and, and stuff, but I'm also, you know, I'm also thinking of the, of the human side, you know, where life happens, you know, and you know, when you, when you guys get my age, you know, you'll. And, um, you know, when you, when you guys get my age, you know, you'll think about things like this. But I'm also thinking, and I, I'm starting to sound like an old man now.
Gretchen's example was, was probably going to be more commonly utilized.
So let me, so let me just offer, because I'd like to move us on. I don't, I, uh, pass this just because we're not going to solve it tonight for sure. Let us give some more thought. I, I absolutely hear what you guys are saying and, and we are having those conversations about financial hardship, medical hardship, other conversations under occupancy. So let me take this back, uh, for consideration and we'll, we'll talk with you more about it next time. Um, just because again, we're not going to solve it tonight in the next 10 minutes. So we, we will come back with some more discussion about it next time.
I'd like to ask a quick question though. We talk about these lengths of stays and existing codes and whatnot. Who enforces these?
Uh, Lewis County, our code, our code enforcement department. So if it, it would, I mean, it's a, we, Lewis County is complaint-based. We do not go out searching for uh, code violations. If we observe a major health, public health issue, you know, we, we would fix that ourselves. But, um, typically code enforcement is complaint-based. So somebody would say they're overstaying at this RV park. But that's how, that's how we would find out about it.
Okay, go on, Preston.
Uh, just really quickly, I did see that Gretchen had her hand up. I just, but did you put it down yourself? I just want to make sure. Okay. All right. So let's, um, let's move on. Uh, so the next one is, uh, thresholds. So clarification is added that if RV parks and campgrounds will have sites that can be individually leased and transferred to another person, then it's a camper club. Camper clubs are considered master planned resorts and they must comply with chapter 1720E uh, of the Lewis County code instead of the new standards that we're proposing. In addition, if the allowed density standards of the new code are exceeded, then the RV Parker campground would also be considered a master planned resort. Example of that is if they want more cabins than our code allows, then they need to go through a different process. Uh, clarification is also added that if any camping site is occupied by an RV with a single person or entity for 180 days or more, then the RV Parker campground is a mobile home park, must comply with that section of our code, which is in title 15. We kind of touched over some of this. Do you guys have questions about this one? So, so really kind of just touching, um, what Commissioner Alf said. We have a lot of different avenues depending on how long people want to stay or what they want to do with their site. So if you want to have a bunch of houses or cabins that you rent out as rental units or short-term rentals along with your RV park, you're a master planned resort at that point. So if you want to have more than the 25% you're allowed, you can go through the master plan resort process, which we have existing in our code. It allows for things like building houses that you can rent out. So, um, there, we do have a lot of different avenues for permitting. This one, these changes are just for RV parks that are recreational. Okay. Any questions? Next slide. Okay. Uh, so this one's new caretaker accommodations. Uh, this new code allows one camping site to be occupied by a permanent RV or cabin for use by a caretaker, ranger, or manager of the RV Parker campground. If this is a cabin or yurt, then it does count towards their allowed, um, uh, cabin units. It counts towards their 25% density. Um, however, it does not, their stays don't count towards like mobile home park stays. Um, in addition, the cabin can be larger. So we went with our ADU code, which is 1,296 square feet. Um, as the size for a caretaker cabin. Does anyone have any questions about this one? Okay. Uh, accessory uses. So our current code doesn't really talk about accessory uses at all. Um, you know, we don't address whether you can have swimming pools or snack huts, uh, the little, you know, convenience store. Um, so we decided that we should make it clear that we, we encourage those types of uses at your RV park and that they're allowed as long as they're fully contained within the RV park itself.
Is a laundry facility included in that?
Yeah. Yep.
How about a, a lunch counter, you know, or okay.
Yep, a restaurant, you know, the, you could have a restaurant, small restaurant, things like that. I actually, I say small, but I don't even think we really specified. Do you want to put it? Do we?
We did, yeah. We kept specifying 2,500 square feet for restaurants and retail because that's the new lammard limitation on, um, on retail. So you can have a restaurant or a convenience store. Yes, definitely laundry. We wholly support laundry services at the RV parks and campgrounds. So.
Okay. Any other ones? Oh, all right. Okay, uh, screen in and buffering, uh, screening and buffering is required by the current regulations. Uh, we clarify it in the, in the new code to require the screening to be a minimum of six feet high and that it obscure at least 80% visibility from adjacent properties. Uh, that's consistent with the composting screening that you guys approved last year. Um, that's where we pulled most of that. Uh, there is an allowance for a water body such as a river or a lake to count towards that screening. So if you're on mineral lake, you know, you don't have to put a fence up so that people can't see your RV park. No, something like that. Okay. Um, okay. So what did we take out? Um, the existing title 16 development regulations include many requirements that are duplicative of other code sections and in some cases were conflicting of them. Uh, the following requirements were, uh, duplicative and taken out. Uh, SEPA review, significant natural features, roads, bridges, signs, drainage, off-site impacts and solid waste. Uh, these are all have existing requirements in our code that are required. So we didn't have to state them in the, in this code. This is a standard that applies to RV parks specifically, but they still have to be the standards of all other codes. So if they have to do SEPA, they'll have to do SEPA. They have roads and internal roads. They have to make sure they're wide enough for fire apparatus access. All of that stuff is existing. So we just didn't need to state it again. Is there any questions about the, those ones? Okay. Um, so I guess, do you guys, are there any questions about anything that we talked about or anything that you like to raise at this point?
Uh, Preston, if I had an RV park and I had a person that if Frank stayed at my RV park and had a heart attack and I couldn't get him off the property, how, how do you remove somebody from your property in an RV park?
Yeah, that's a good question for not, not me. I don't, I don't know how, how a landlord would go about removing tenants or, or similar situations.
At some point it would be a code enforcement. If the landlord didn't do it, then it would come to us, could come to us as code enforcement, right? So some, somebody could complain and say, hey, landlord is letting someone live in the RV park. Our current regulations are 60 days or 180 days, depending on what type of RV park you are. Um, so at some point it could land in our lap with, with code enforcement. We would start taking the code enforcement actions that we typically take with the property owner. But I don't know what the rules are for the landlords. We can look into what they would do.
And, and really Lori, at that point, what would happen is we would start writing you notices of violation.
I, I'm telling him to leave, but he does, the reason I'm thinking of this is because I think of, of RV, RV parks as that they could be maybe the bottom rung of the o- options for people to live in that don't have any place else. And so if they get in there and they can't find a place to move in 180 days, what do I do?
You tell them to leave and if they don't leave, then you trespass them and you call the sheriffs.
Let me, can I make, I'm just going to say something that is, this is terrible. There's, but there's a huge loophole in this. Move sites. You don't have to take the person out of the campground. Yeah. I mean, I'm just saying, there's a huge loophole that we're not ever going to close. It's impossible to close that one because we're not going to surveil people's property for them, right? If you are the landlord in that circumstance and you don't want to try to kick them out and get the law involved, move them one site over. You are no longer in violation of our code.
Okay, well, I.
Can you move the site number sign?
And just keep in mind from our standpoint, we have what? Three enforcement officers for the entire county. And we are a complaint-driven enforcement. We do not go out looking for these cases. We have many people living in RV parks and on their properties that they're not supposed to be doing it. We don't know about them. You know, we don't have code enforcement cases out on those. So it's not like we're going, driving around saying, get off the property.
Right. I was just thinking that you, you know, who, who is stay, who would stay at an RV park for longer than six months? It could be the seasonal workers. It could be the snowbird. I, or it could be somebody that can't afford or can't find any other place to go. And so, uh, my experience has been when a person can't find a place to go, you got a problem. The landlord has a problem.
Right. And again, I'll need to.
I don't know about the county, but I've never had them.
Right. We will have to look into the rules because this RV parks and campgrounds are not the same as trying to kick somebody out of an apartment or out of a house that they are renting. These are very different rules. So I will need to look into them.
It would act the same if they don't have a place to go.
And you cited, you know, um, health concerns and safety concerns, you know? Having somebody move from one site to another doesn't address any of those concerns. All it does is just restart an artificial clock.
Yeah. The reality is we can't. We can't fix these problems, right? So if somebody's living full-time in their RV, we know that it's not the safest place for them. But we can't, we can't, we can only, we can only enforce the regulations as how they should be. And as Mindy mentioned, we're not out busting people in RV parks. We know, we know of, I mean, I know of dozens of examples where people have been living in an RV park for a very long time. And nobody said anything. And if nobody's saying anything, then nobody ever finds out about it. We have no reason to be looking. So, I mean, the, the fact is that we know that there will be people that overstay. We know that there will be RV park owners that allow people to overstay. We can only enforce the code that we have when we find out about those things.
I'm just, you know, again, I know, I won't say anything more about it, but I'm thinking of some kind of, um, you know, a, a a policy where somebody could appeal the, you know, the, the, the code, ask for a 30-day extension or, you know, or whatever, pay a fee, you know, whatever, you know, just so that, you know, their life can get back together before they have to.
Yeah, but Frank, every, everybody's going to have some, you know, something that, that isn't going to work.
So again, I'm just, I'm just.
So if code enforcement comes out, they're not going to kick you out tomorrow. They're going to say, you know, have 30 days to leave or whatever, you know?
So I, so again, I'm just going to, I'm going to ask that we hold, just hold this piece.
I am.
Frank, hold. I, I like, my likely expectation of how this is going to go on this issue of RV occupancy is we're going to need you to suspend that piece of the conversation while we get this thing passed, knowing that we are going to come back to RV occupancy as a, on a topic all by itself. And there may be decisions that we make out of that conversation that then we'll go back and make some surgical changes to RV parks and campground codes. So I, I think that's probably likely where we're going to go because we feel like all these changes and here are good changes and we have some people who are chomping at the bit to do new RV parks and campgrounds under these new codes. So I don't want to hold that for, uh, honestly, a very hard conversation that is bigger than RV parks and campgrounds. Cause we have people living in RVs all over the county. They all fall underneath the same kind of conversations that we're having here where, where we, we don't want to make homeless, right? That is not our intention. So, um, let's just, we'll put a pin in this one. We'll, we'll find out some more information to bring back to you next time, but I do think the outcome will be, we're going to probably need to hold that conversation and have it after we get through this piece. So.
If we were to do this, will it change your application for RV parks?
It, well, it'll make it so that you don't need a binding site plan. So, yep.
Community website now that I could look at it. Okay.
Yep. Uh, we had talked about having a specific RV park application. That's not something that you guys would, would need to approve or look at. Um, we, but we have had those discussions about having maybe a, uh, an application for RV parks specifically. Um, cause we, if you guys go onto our website right now, we have special use permits for your regular one. And then we have one for a mining operation. I mean, we have a couple of different, different ones out there.
Go under special use permits and then there's going to be something on that application that is pertinent to RV parks.
Yeah. You either will fill out this, the basic special use application that need, that has all the information that we need. Or we will have one that's specific to RV parks that will have all the information that we need. Yeah. But we have had that talk.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, any other questions before we move on to next steps? All right. Okay. Uh, so right now we are at the workshop. Um, we are planning a second workshop on June 27th. Uh, the reason for the second one is to give you guys some more time, uh, read the code amendments, ask us questions. Uh, if you have any questions before the next one, please just let us know so that we can prepare, um, in time. I mean, obviously you guys can ask questions at the time when they come up too. But if, if anything comes up between now and then, just send, just let Mindy or I know, and then we can prepare those answers for you. Okay, next one. So tentative schedule. Uh, so today we had the workshop. Uh, your first one, June 27th will be the next one. Tentatively, the July 6th would be when the notice of hearings published. Um, and then July 25th is when we have the public hearing kind of on the books right now. But those can, those are definitely fluid. So if we have a bunch of discussion that we need to have, we can push those dates back. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. Uh, we'll move to Mindy for our On Alaska Sub area plan.
Yeah, absolutely. I also just wanted to share for the gentleman behind us that, um, staff are always available to answer questions and to sit down. I mean, we can sit down with people one-on-one and have a long conversation about this. So we, we understand that this is not the right setting for a conversation with the public. Um, so I just wanted to make sure it was clear that, that, um, Preston obviously is always available to have conversations as of my. Okay. The next issue is On Alaska. So, um, I wanted to let you guys know, you may have already known this, but we are starting the On Alaska Sub area planning process. So this is similar to Packwood. On the screen there, you see a map of On Alaska. The yellow line is actually the existing urban growth boundary. So On Alaska has an urban growth boundary. It was applied in 2017 through a sub-area planning process. However, that process did not hit all the elements that are needed within a sub-area plan. And it's actually created a conflict for us in terms of implementing some, um, new development that's going on out there. The two zones that are in that On Alaska area are small town mixed use and small town industrial. Those are lammard zones. And technically lammard zones can't be in a UGA. So we have this conflict in our code where we've got code that says not in a UGA and then lammard code that says in a lammard, but not in a UGA. And it's creating some serious headaches for us. So we need to fix this. Um, so this is a bit different than the Packwood one where Packwood's is completely voluntary. There's no need to do it. It's, it's a desire to get ahead of the development going on out there. Um, so that's why we're doing it. As you know, the sub area planning process is actually completed by the community. Staff's job is to facilitate that conversation. The community actually comes up with the 20-year vision, the goals, the policies, uh, we just, we just facilitate that through. We held a first community meeting on June 7th, so last week, a week, a week ago, um, on Wednesday to start letting people know about the process and start recruiting for the community advisory committee out there. We had 57 people attend that meeting. 14 filled out the form for the advisory committee. So that's wonderful. Ideally, um, we'd like to have 20 people volunteer for that. That's really kind of the sweet spot for getting a lot of diversity of views and hitting all the issues out there. So still actively recruiting for that recruiting. Lord, it's getting late. My words aren't working well. Um, we anticipate starting the advisory committee process in September. So we won't start it over the summer while everybody's doing their vacations and craziness. We'll wait, we'll wait till September to start those. Um, we'll keep you, we'll keep you posted. We're, we are working from an existing plant. So this isn't Packwood where we're starting from scratch. We're actually starting with something and moving it forward. So I don't anticipate that it will take as long and we do want to marry the process up with the periodic updates. So the hope, if it all works is we get the On Alaska phase one vision goals, policies done. And then we move into the development regulations and it can kind of marry up with when we're doing development regulations for everything else. So you're going to hopefully have a package of development regulations that come before you, um, in 2025 that include the Packwood development up, regulation updates. development up, regulation updates, On Alaska development regulation updates, and then anything else that we have coming out of periodic update. So we'll keep you posted the entire way through, just like we're doing with Packwood. That's all I have because we actually haven't started it. So yeah, questions?
Do you have to live? Do you have to live in that UGA to be on that committee that you're trying to get?
Absolutely not. Um, so you need to be a stakeholder. And when I say that, it just means you have to have a stake in the outcome. And a stake in the outcome can literally be as, as simple as I go to church in there. Right? That's a stake. What happens to your community matters to you. You may live miles away. Maybe your only stake is I frequently eat dinner at a restaurant in town. That's a steak. So anybody who has a stake in the community is totally invited. We want you at the table. There is no upper cap on the number of people for the advisory committee. We'll take anybody who wants to be on it.
Uh, I, I'd like to pay you a compliment. I had a, a, a person that I highly respect in the community that was in attendance at that meeting and, uh, gave me a rundown as to, you know, how different it was. I'll just say it this way, how different it was than Packwood. And that you handled yourself and represented the county at an extremely high professional level. And so, um, I just couldn't wait for this subject to come up so that I could pay you that compliment. And I wanted on the record, well done. Uh, and I, I, I told this individual, um, you know, that that's the way she is. And, uh, you know, to be honest with you, when, when I first met you, you know, and I heard that you were from Portland, I was nervous. But after we had lunch, you immediately laid my concerns and you have done nothing but show the very best of who you are and your ability to engage with the public. I appreciate your ability to engage with us. Even though when we talk about stuff that's not in line with what we're supposed to be talking about, you have a great way of reining us in. So anyway, I just wanted to say that for the record. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. That's very kind. Thank you. Tell that person, thank you. It was, it was actually a great meeting that, um, everybody in the room was just really well engaged. There were smart, good questions asked. And so I love, I love a well-attended, well-engaged meeting. So it was, it was a very good meeting. Really happy with it.
Okay. Well, is there anything for the good of the order, Mindy?
No. Okay. I mean, can you even handle it? I just said no.
Excellent. No. Is there anything from the planning commission? The next meeting will be June 27th and we'll have a second workshop on the RV parks and campgrounds. And we'll get an update on the Packwood sub area plan. Uh, anything else on that meeting?
I don't think so.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Excellent. The meeting's adjourned. Good night.